You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next, it's November 15th, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, November 15th at, we're starting at 6:00 PM. Everyone stand up for the pledge allegiance. Richard?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which this stands, one nation, our home in the circle with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Aug.
Roll call.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Present.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
And Commissioner Haney.
Present.
All three are present.
Consider agenda.
Madam President, we have two things we need to add to our agenda tonight. Under 11E would be consider contract with indot for reimbursement of road restoration for a detour route with LaPorte County, within LaPorte County. And the second would be MS4 permit application for stable estate subdivision. And I would approve the agenda with those additions.
I have a motion to approve with the two additions under 11E for indot reimbursement and under F to discuss the MS4 permit.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of November 1st, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve minutes for November 2nd, November 1st, excuse me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of claims. We'll start with payroll first.
Payroll Commissioners for the period ending October 27th, 2023 would be in the amount of $1,481,649.31. Move to approve payroll as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve payroll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claims.
Those would be in the amount of $4,728,015.61. Move to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? I just have one quick question. I know that there was a discussion about three additional bills that were approved this week for a vendor that some of the bills were outstanding from September. Are those included in this claims or are they not?
I know that we have some claims for a vendor that the, the council is advertising. We just got the, put the advertisement into pay. If they appropriate some additional monies for some of those, so I think those will be.
So they were five, five different, they were cut down into five bills. But I guess our secretary had talked to Rhonda and they said the three of them were going to be added. And I just wanted to know if those three were added. They were the smaller bills of the five.
Um, so.
Ian, do you have the dollar amounts for those?
Yes, a total?
Yes.
The three, I believe that could be paid that would be added in with the expedite would be $502,022.22.
So we can't add, um, we can't add, there's a state notice requirement and I was going to bring this up maybe during, during my department economists, we have to add things five days before. So like, I think it's been a mistake to be adding things at a meeting like this.
Okay.
But however, what I would again respectfully recommend, and I did bring this up before, is that to the degree that some of these or a measure of all these are specific to claims that involve the courthouse annex product project that, that you authorize expedites of those bills because then we can pay them prior to your next meeting.
It's just that we had gotten the emails. I wanted to make sure that if we were going to do it according to the email and if, if you're saying that we can't do it, then that's fine. Which I just wanted to make sure that if this, if this dollar amount included the email that was sent from your deputy to us saying that those three claims were going to be added in. If they're not added in, that's fine.
I don't know if, I don't believe they are.
Okay.
Because we're still dealing with that now and we can't, we can't add things in last minute. That's like something we'll get written up for. So we have to establish what your claims docket is five days before the meeting actually. So however, because of the nature of the expedite process, you're the ones that determine what, what items can be expedited. We, we could pay that without it being on your claims docket as long as you authorize it as an expedite. Specific to some of those, those, those claims, we can't step on the toes of the council because they made, they made specific appropriations.
Right.
For specific types of projects.
So out of the five claims, three of them qualified within the, within there. So, and I guess maybe there's confusion because your deputy had said that they were going to be added in and I'm just asking, were they added in or weren't they? If they weren't added in, there's not.
I don't believe they're added in. I, I, she didn't tell me that something was going to be added in.
Okay, perfect. So there is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Open to public comment. Public comment.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm not here as Tim Short from Sheriff's Department. I'm here as Tim Short, Marine Corps League and Toys for Tots. You've noticed in all three of the county buildings, I got my Toys for Tots boxes out. Highway building is doing pretty good. Checking on it yesterday. In total, we've got about 170 locations throughout LaPorte County with, with boxes. So hopefully we'll do good again this year. Last year, I think we did pretty good. We collected right around 14,000 toys last year. So hopefully we can, we can beat that this year. Our final pickup for it will be about December 18th. And then we'll get it to, we partnered with both Salvation Army's, we'll get it to them and then we'll all get it passed out. Or we'll take them to the, the families that contact us directly and, and get the toys passed out to their kids and make sure that much more kids in our county have a good Christmas. A side note or another part of that, I guess. I told you guys before about military or the Devil Dogs, social group of the Marine Corps League. Every year we donate a check to whatever children's hospital that we're at for the, the whole city. This year we were in Oklahoma City. We donated a check for $74,000 to Oklahoma City's Children's Hospital. And it's actually went to one floor there and helps them get equipment, helps them take care of the kids, help take care of their families for the kids that are, that are in the hospital there. So.
Well, thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate it.
Indeed.
So once we get everything picked up and I get my state report and national report, I'll be back in about February and report what we did nationally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have anyone else for public comment? On Zoom, do we have anyone for public comment?
Okay.
Hearing no one coming up, we close public comment. We open department heads' reports or comments.
Good evening.
Sitting.
Chief probation officer, adult probation. And I'm, I'm here today for the LaPorte probation division. You know, we had two divisions, one in Michigan City, one in LaPorte. And we suffered a flood in Christmas time of 22. And over the period of time, the, the space was repaired. We have new flooring, new paint. It looks great. They did a great job. We moved in on August 24th of this year. And since that time, we haven't had maintenance in with a broom, a mop or a vacuum. And there's dirt on the floor. And I can tell you that my secretary reached out to maintenance on August 28th. I reached out on September 12th. My secretary reached out again on September 14th, September 20th, September 28th. Councilman Novak said he was going to put in a work order. Commissioner Haney requested to Mr. Fitzpatrick, please ensure that the adult probation offices are getting cleaned according to the proper schedules. And Commissioner Haney reached out to Mr. Fitzpatrick on November 1st, requesting that it be taken care of by the end of that week. And since we moved in, nothing has happened. There are stains on the floor. There's dirt throughout the halls. There's a dead bug in our waiting area. And there are clumps of hair and dust similar to tumbleweeds in the west. So I'm, I'm just trying to find out why my office is the one office in LaPorte County government that is not getting cleaned. You know, we've been there 84 days and, and it's, it's really looking kind of bad down there in a brand new, beautiful remodeled space.
So I know personally I went into your office, correct? You just remember me coming to your office. And we had a discussion where you had said you had gone out and bought vacuum cleaners?
No. I said we bought a dust mop. We bought a Swiffer and we bought a vacuum.
A vacuum?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it was my assumption, because when I had walked into your office, there were leaves from your dead tree, right? From your dead plants.
No, there was some, there was some, a little bit of dirt maybe down on the floor.
And there was candy wrappers on the floor.
Oh, I picked that up, yeah.
Okay.
That's not what I'm talking about.
But you, I mean, I think if you want to have this discussion here, we can have it offline. But I mean, I think that we've, I know you and I have had that discussion and so.
Well, when you walked through, you were with Mr. Fitzpatrick, I believe. And I had the assumption that you were looking at the state of the office and you would follow up with maintenance to come in and clean. And yet nothing has happened. And to be honest, my staff down there is seeing felons, burglars, robbers, murderers, child molesters, all sorts of people. That takes a great deal of time. My officers are also writing pre-sentence investigation reports that go to the judges before a person is sentenced for a felony. To expect them to say to an offender, oh, wait, I've got to go sweep. That's not what our job is. Our job is to be, we work for the court. All five courts in LaPorte County. And we just don't have the time to go around and, and do that kind of cleaning. Especially when every other office in LaPorte County is getting cleaned by maintenance. I don't understand why we've been single out.
Madam President, I would make a motion to direct facilities to go and clean adult probation offices.
A second. Second, just so we can move on.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Do we have any other department heads?
Thank you, Madam President. Matt Ridden, Office of Economic Development. Want to let the group know that the broadband process continues. We keep working with the internet service providers. For those who were in the various neighborhoods in, in the county, thank you very much for your participation and looking out for your neighbors for the availability of broadband. As I mentioned previously, the grants do not come to the county. The grant money is provided to the internet service providers. Our role is the OMs, Budsmen, and trying to facilitate in areas that need to have more investments. So we're continuing with that. As the commission may be aware, the Ready Grant 1 went for a project in the Kingsbury Industrial Park to connect the rail and to build a bridge. It was discussed at the Northwest Indiana Forum event of one of the few, very few construction projects that were done by Ready 1. The Ready 2 is coming out at the first of the year. The forum is working through that and they'll again serve in a fiduciary capacity with that. And in the next coming months in particular, we're going to have a meeting of the Redevelopment Commission and other, the Economic Development Team to discuss 2024 goals and objectives and strategies. We're looking forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other department heads on Zoom?
Madam President, I have a quick update as well for the broadband. Past couple of weeks, I've attended a couple of different meetings relating to that as well as some of the BID grants that we'll be looking at next year. One of the biggest things that I've heard from the public who don't have high-speed internet or in some cases any internet at home whatsoever here in the county is how do we get online to take the survey when we don't have internet at home? So I'm happy to announce that there is an 800 number that's being set up to actually go. And if you don't have internet at home, you'll be able to call the 800 number and do your survey that way. That number should be going live right after the first of the year. And of course, as a reminder, take your high-speed speed tests at home, but keep in mind that you'll need to retake those coming up in the first quarter of next year because part of the data that they're collecting, they want fresh data and most of that requires about a 90-day window. So I appreciate everybody's diligence who's been keeping up with that and making sure that they know that the need here in LaPorte County is, is very great to get that taken care of. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam President, I'd like to give a shout out to our county planner, Mitch Bishop. I think this is the seventh year in a row that he's landed the million-dollar grant from Community Crossings. It's, it's a beautiful thing. Mitch works hard at that. I want to make sure that he got the full credit for that. So, thank you. That's all.
Okay, having no other department heads, we'll move on to request. First request is consider sick days paid for Laura DePysler, who is leaving us after 22 years. Just like to give a big shout out to her because, you know, it's a long time to work at one location and she's done a very good job for us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then our second request is consider solar lights. This is from the Center Township Fire Department. I did talk to, I'm not sure if she could be here tonight, but I did get a chance to talk to Lisa Piersekowsky. And we went ahead and we also talked to Highway Department because in this request, she has the money to be able to pay for it and then any kind of insulation. So the question is, when you look at the actual information that they sent to us, it looks like it's going to be a rather large pole. We might not have the capacity to help out. If we can, we will. If, if it's, it's going to be a pole that's going to hold like a small sign. If it turns out that it has to be a larger pole to hold lights, then Ms. Piersekowsky will go ahead and pay for that to get done. So right now, all she's looking for is for approval from us to have the lights installed on both sides of Johnson Road.
And move to approve the request from Center Township Fire Department and trustee Piersekowsky.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Under old business, we have consider recommendation for material bids for 2024. Charity Glasser, thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. So we bid seven classes for the materials that we will use in 2024. First class was crushed limestone. We had two bidders, US aggregates and South Lake Stone. We'll accept both bids. Second class was for patch wrap materials. We had three bidders, Reeve Riley, Central Paving and Milestone. And we will accept all of their bids. Class three, we had no bidders. That was for slag. Class four, ice sand, gravel, dirt and topsoil, one bidder, area excavating. We will accept area's bid. Class five, no lead, DSO and E85, one bidder, Triple J Mar, we receive, accept their bid. And class six, we had one bidder. It was signs and signposts, Michael Todd Industrial Supply. We're going to reject that bid because the prices were significantly, significantly higher than what we're spending this year. And class seven, culvert pipe and guardrail, one bidder, Deppco metal culverts, and we will accept Deppco's bid.
Motion to approve the recommendations of the Highway Department.
Second that with a friendly amendment to give preference to the lowest bids when possible.
Yes.
So I just have a quick question. Are you going to, the one that you rejected, are you going to send that back out to bid?
Yeah, we'll do it in the spring when we do the paving and those bids, we'll, we'll bid it back out.
Okay, real good. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Moving on to new business, we have consider workman's comp renewal. Presenting will be John Jones.
The John Jones.
The John.
Good evening, Madam President, Commissioners, John Jones, Machine Insurance. As you know, December 7th is the renewal date for the workers' compensation insurance. We've got two competitive bids in the packet that I handed out. I do have extra packets if anybody needs one for tonight, but I, I know everybody received one. Our incumbent Bitco is among those that provided a proposal as well as Key Risk of Berkeley Company. They are A-plus rated superior with AM Best. They've been in business about the same amount of time as Bitco, 35 years. They have a 97% approval rating from Claims Handling. An 88% rate of getting employees back to work within seven days. Some of the subjectivities that come with that new carrier bid is the fact that we need to provide them with a up-to-date volunteer roster and maintain that throughout the year. As well as they would like us to sign the commitment letter, I call it more than a contract. They call it an agreement. It's in your packet to do transitional duty. They feel as a partnered stakeholder in this that more aggressive transitional duty will fare well to bring down our lost experience and, you know, good for the carrier as well. I know I've had conversations individually with you, answered some questions, but I stand ready to answer anymore tonight.
Mr. Jones, I appreciate your diligence going back and getting Bitco to try and submit another, submit it and lower their prices, which they did, but obviously not substantially enough. At this point, I'd make the motion to approve the proposal from Key Risk for our workers' comp insurance.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Good job, John.
Thank you.
Consider ordinance for approved planned commission rezoning in Springfield Township.
Madam President, Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. I'm Tom Cowan. I'm with Zarumba Group out of Cleveland, Ohio. We're a developer. And we're here tonight to discuss a rezoning for a Dollar General on State Route 20. We are requesting a very small portion of land, less than half an acre, .483 acres. It's not big enough for a Dollar General, but we're combining that with what had been rezoned approximately two years ago. One and a half acres to give us about two acres. The idea here is Dollar General, two years ago, had intended to build a 9,100 square foot store. There were several delays with that, including the indot work that's just now really getting started. The seller also had some work he had to do, infrastructure work on a sanitary line. The delays got to be so impactful that our schedule got blown out of the water. Dollar General said, we'll come back later. Let's just stop the deal. They came back earlier this year and said, let's start it up again. But our store size has gone from 9,100 square feet to 12,480 square feet.
Wow.
They would like to do a Dollar General Market Store. The market emphasizing fresh food, produce, more frozen food. So the delay has been great for the customer. And that's what we need the additional land for. That half an acre, give or take, will be added to the 1.6 that was done a couple of years ago, giving us roughly two acres. That's what we'll need to build the larger Dollar General.
Appreciate that. I would move to approve on first reading, the rezoning.
I would second that and ask that our attorney has looked us over.
Yes, I've received the paperwork, I believe, from the Planning Commission Attorney where everything's been certified, everything seems in order and I, we haven't heard any complaints. So I have no reason to get in between it.
No remonstrance.
So can we suspend the rule and?
After the first reading, we can move to suspend the rule and then go and do the second reading or adopt by title. And then we have to have a roll call vote.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on first reading. Roll call. We need the roll call now.
I'll do it just to be safe.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Then we need a motion to suspend the rules and do our second vote on the ordinance tonight. I'd make that motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rule and read, I have the second reading tonight. Roll call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Then on the second reading, we make a motion to approve the ordinance. One second reading.
One second.
So we have a motion and a second for a second reading on the ordinance to read by title only. Do we have to do to read by only? Roll call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Brzezinski.
Aye.
Three ayes.
There you go.
Thank you.
It'd be nice to have a Dollar General in LaPorte County.
A nice big sized one too.
I do.
Okay, moving on. So we have consider vacation, holiday and vacation pay for employees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just so we know, this is a motion and a second for holiday vacation pay for employees under the JSC Division. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider insurance renewal for employees. Craig Meany from General Insurance will be presenting.
Good evening, Madam President and Commissioners. Craig Meany, President of General Insurance Services. Here on behalf of the Insurance Committee with the recommendation to approve the renewal for the Employee Benefits Plan. As you may recall from prior years, the county maintains a partially self-funded plan, meaning the county is really the primary insurance company. We do purchase excess coverage that's presently provided by Berkeley. We did the, we did an RFP, received multiple bids for both administrators and stop loss. Do you all have, I just make sure you receive the executive summary. Okay. So Berkeley, the initial renewal came in with a 14 and a half percent increase. That got worked down through multiple iterations to 8.5%. So you'll see in the middle column under the 2024 current, the company's recommendation we need to continue with UMR as the administrator. Berkeley is the stop-loss carrier with that 8.5% increase. The other next competitive stop-loss offer was Symmetra. That would represent a 13.5% increase. We also received a proposal from Anthem, which would represent a 22.6% increase. And then also included just some of the underwriting considerations that we just sort of worked through. Those are listed kind of in order. There was a 8.3% increase in, in covered employees over the course of the year. Inpatient utilization increased almost 25% over the course of the year. Not surprisingly, emergency room visits increased 8.4%. Oftentimes, folks will be admitted through the emergency room. And then finally, cancer represents 50% of all high-cost claims. So there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of ongoing, very significant claims and so that was just obviously a material part of the, of the renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Meany. Appreciate that. I would move to approve the UMR Berkeley contract at the 8.5% rate as opposed to the others.
Second to motion.
So we have a motion and a second to. So we have a motion and a second to approve the health insurance for the employees. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you all, you and your fans have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work on this, getting those rates down as low as we could.
Now, we have the indot agreement. And so this was on a detour, if you'd like to give an explanation.
Yes, so Highway 6 was closed for a bridge project for around five months or so. And the unofficial detour was 550 East and 1,000 South. There was a lot of traffic on that road. And with indot, we got with indot, and they were going to offer to help us pave and fix those roads. And they are offering now, we ended up paving, spot paving 1,000 South and paving 550 East from Landmark to 1,000 South. And that total came out to $202,997.13. And then indot is offering to reimburse us $146,886.65 of that. So our share to fix that was only $56,000.
And that included 600 or did not include?
It did not include 600. 600 was not part of the unofficial detour.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we accept the contract for indot reimbursement.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept the indot agreement. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then we have the MS4 permitting.
Yeah, let me see if I can make sense of this. So I understand it. The MS4 permit application for stable estate subdivision, like a motion to... Hold on. I want to do this in one reading. With respect to the ongoing MS4 and Plane Commission case with D and M proposed stable estates subdivision, we ask MS4 to table any further action until we learn the outcome of the current litigation. And we authorize our attorney to get involved, to gather information to share with the Board of Commissioners at our next meeting, December 6th.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. And you were saying Sable, right? S-A-B-L-E?
Yeah, stable estates, it's called.
Sable.
Sable.
Excuse me, Commissioner. It is, Madam President, Sable, S-A-B-L-E.
Oh, Sable.
Sable, I'm sorry, Commissioner. So just to be specific, this is an MS4 permit application for property, I believe known as Sable Estates, which is with D and M excavating. And so we're, I believe the motion is to direct MS4 to not accept or reject the application for further attorney review, because we have litigation pending concerning the same area in Porter Superior Court. And so I need two weeks to look into this for further review. I'm not going to discuss it here today because I still need to review it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading. Do we need a second reading for this?
No.
No? Okay. Cool.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.